Good evening. This is the January 12th meeting at the Zoning Board of Appeals. First up, we have a... I move the determination made November 9th, 2022, on appeal number 2022-19 in the matter of Christopher Batta, is hereby vacated. And this board will hereby determine, hereby determines to schedule the rehearing of the matter on April 13th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. I move the determination made 10/8/2020, appeal number 2020-35, in the matter of Papendopolis, hereby vacated. And this board hereby determines the schedule and rehearing on April 13th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion?
Shall move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are we voting on two?
Yes, we are. We got two of them.
Okay, so you read two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, got them both.
All right, so?
So...
Vote?
Yep, call of vote. Mrs. Zaweski?
Hi.
Mr. Whitmire?
Hi.
Mr. Gazillo?
I recuse.
Uh, Mr. Barnes?
Hi.
Do you have to recuse him?
No, just unplug.
That's why I don't know why you combined them.
I should have, I combined them. You want me to do this over again? Dawn?
Yes.
I kind of combined them. Should I do it over again? Just do one at a time?
I think one at a time would be better.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, let's start this over again. I move the determination made November 9th, 2022, on appeal number 2022-19 in the matter of Christopher Batta, is hereby vacated, and this board will hereby determine to schedule the rehearing of the matter on April 13th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gazillo?
Recuse.
Mr. Barnes?
Hi.
Mr. Zaweski?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Okay, and then we have, I move the determination of 10/8/2020, appeal number 2020-35 in the matter of Papendopolis. I hereby vacate, we hereby vacate this board, and this board hereby determines the schedule of rehearing in the matter of, on the matter on April 13th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
All right, Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay.
Forty-five Washington.
Okay, reserved decision on 2021-49, 45 Washington Avenue. We're going to reopen that one, right? Yeah. No, they don't have, excuse me, get confused there. We're gonna hold off until April 4th, April 13th, is it? First meeting in April?
Yes.
We're gonna adjourn that to the April 13th meeting.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, let's start with the heart of the matter.
Okay, appeal 2022-039, HK Ventures, 4285 Middle Country Road, Calverton, Suffolk County Tax Math Number 600-116-1-2, industrial C zoning, variances in or relief from Chapter 301, Section 123A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 65.51% of the total lot area, and maximum permitted is 60%. And where proposed building height is 38 feet to center line of roof peak, and the maximum is 30 feet. And this has been adjourned from December 8th, 2022.
All right. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help me God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Good evening for the applicant, Matthew Ingber, from the law firm of Brown, Altman and DeLeo, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301, Melville, New York. So I'm here this evening in respect to HK Ventures' area variance application to develop an industrial warehouse at 4285 Middle Country Road in Calverton. As previously mentioned, we were here on December 8th of 2022, where the applicant and the project team appeared before this board to present the application and to address questions from the board. As a matter of housekeeping, the public notice posting was performed in accordance with the town code, and an affidavit was submitted to the ZBA secretary prior to this hearing. With me this evening is our project team of experts. We have Jaclyn Pronto, P.E. of Key Civil Engineering, the project civil engineer; Mike Messina of BLD Architecture, the project architect; Caitlin Keim of PW Grosser, our project environmental consultant; Josh Herman of Stonefield Engineering, our traffic engineer; and Scott Johns, a representative of HK Ventures. We note that on December 8th of 2022, at the December 8th, 2022 hearing, there were no requests from this board for, or the public, for additional information, nor were there any unanswered questions. So with that, the applicant is here this evening and is, will address any questions that the board may have.
What other issues do you have? What other boards do you have to pass?
So right now, we are, the application is pending site plan review from the, from the planning board, and the supplemental draft environmental impact study is also pending before the planning board.
So why are you jumping the gun? Wanting your way till all those are done?
We were advised we could proceed to the ZBA, have our application, and then the decision, the hearing can be held with a decision reserved pending secret determination.
We're gonna hold off until we have all the information from the other, the other boards. We're not making any determinations, I believe. Dawn, you want to take that?
Yeah, this board can't make a determination, obviously.
Right, of course.
But I think the board adjourned the hearing to digest the information they heard at the last, and they didn't, they don't have to indicate that they have any questions on it.
Sure.
The whole hearing is adjourned, so there is additional information that can be received, so I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay, I got it.
That, that's what is happening, not that, you know, to suggest that they didn't have any questions really, but they just didn't ask any at that particular moment.
Understood.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the application is exactly the same as it was on December 8th of 2022, and we are waiting on a secret determination from the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you.
So... You have the floor.
That's it, so we're here. If anyone has any, any questions, our project team is here to answer them.
Okay.
I think we're planning to give some summary of their report.
Well, let's have our planning department come up. If you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
My name, for the record, is Greg Bergman. I work for the Riverhead Planning Department. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. I've just come, I've prepared a memo, I will provide it to Tracy for inclusion in the record. I just wanted to relay some of the information from the planning department and the planning board's review of this application. This application has actually been pending with the planning board now for approximately three years, undergoing various stages of secret review. So they are seeking relief for impervious coverage of 65.51%, where the maximum permitted is 60, and they are seeking a variance for building height for 38 feet to the roof, the center line of the roof peak, where maximum 30 is permitted. Now, just for the board's knowledge, there is a precedent that this board has set within the industrially zoning, the industrial zone, it's actually in the industrial A zoning district. That was appeal number 2016-059, and that was an application for the Calverton Distribution Pods Warehouse. That's located at 3651 Middle Country Road in Calverton. That application sought relief from the ZBA to permit the construction of a building with a height of 35.5 feet, where again, 30 feet was permitted. I will note, industrial A and industrial C, they are different zoning districts, but they do have the commonality of having a maximum height of 30 feet. So for that, ZBA application, number 16-059, the ZBA did grant the relief sought, and that determination was dated December 8th of 2016. And I will note that the Calverton Distribution Pods application sought a variance, the 5.5 feet, just in terms of empirical percentages, represented an increase of 18.3% above what's allowed by the code. In contrast, this application, HK Ventures, is seeking a variance for eight feet above what's permitted by the code, and that translates roughly to an increase of 26.6%. Now, there is a potential further precedent to be set by this board in granting the variance height for 38 feet. The ZBA, as you're aware, is also an involved agency for another site plan application that is currently pending before the planning board. That application is known as Riverhead Logistics Center, also known as North Point Development. Those names kind of get thrown around interchangeably. Now, that application, and I don't want to conflate the two, but they are in industrial zones for industrial uses, that application is seeking impervious surface coverage, they're seeking 75.36%, where 70 is allowed, and they're proposing a building height of 50 feet, where 30 feet is allowed. Now, that is significantly beyond what this applicant is seeking. That equates to about a 66% increase. But the general trend that we're seeing in the planning board and at the, you know, planning level review, it's going from 18.3, 26.6, you know, there is a precedent to be set by increasing the height through the ZBA. And I will just touch on some of the New York Town Law, Section 276B, which is the guiding criteria which the Zoning Board of Appeals must weigh when considering variances, for area variances. Number one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or the detriment of nearby properties. Number two is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant other than an area variance. Number three is whether the requested area variance is substantial. Number four is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And number five is whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Now, that consideration in and of itself shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance. To the first point of whether it will cause an undesirable change in the surrounding area. So without a doubt, the proposed development will cause an intensification of the land use of the subject property. However, on page three of that memo that I prepared, I just clipped a quick aerial from near maps, it's a current aerial image, and I've highlighted the, the different land uses in the immediate area. I do note, to the west of the property is Sky Materials Site, and there is also a commercial site containing tractor supply. That site also was approved for three additional pad sites that will eventually be built out in the future. The property directly to the east is an agricultural parcel. One parcel beyond that to the east, there's another commercial industrial facility, and there are several residential uses, both on the north side of 25, as well as on the south side of 25. So looking at both variances, while they are separate, they do have kind of like a compound effect. So the way I look at it is that the request for the increase in impervious surface coverage will kind of inherently by its nature reduce the amount of landscaped area that the applicant is able to provide, will reduce the amount of green space. Now, when you look at that coupled with the increased building height, you've reduced the potential for increasing landscape buffers while simultaneously increasing the building height. So you look at that from the aspect of having visual impacts to the surrounding area. To the second point of whether or not the desired benefit can be sought by the applicant by any other method other than a variance, this one is kind of tough, and I've wrestled with it a bit throughout the secret review of this project. This project is being speculatively developed throughout the penancy of the application. The applicant has stated that they do not have any tenants specifically lined up. So without any specific tenant or user of the site in mind, it is very difficult to say that the desired relief can't be sought through another method. Again, I'll reference the Calverton Distribution Pods application, I went and looked through the minutes. Calverton Distribution Pods had a specific tenant in mind, a specific user. They went on in their application to state that in order to get three of those portable distribute, you know, the portable on-demand storage units, in order to stack them three high, they needed a certain amount of feet, and then they needed clearance height for fire sprinklers and et cetera. So I would just say that, you know, without any tenants in mind, it's a difficult burden to prove that they can't, you know, develop this project, other than to just be able to market the site a little more aggressively in trend, you know, in conjunction with the industrial trend right now. To the point of whether or not the requested variances are substantial, I would offer that the impervious surface coverage increase of 5.5% is not substantial. However, when you look at the requested height variance, 26.6% is substantial. There is case law, I can't cite specific cases, but there are different cases throughout the state where different zoning board of appeals have been upheld in denying variances for something in, representing a 15% increase in lot coverage. So I would say that the 26% is a substantial increase. And to the fifth point, whether or not the alleged difficulties are self-created, I would offer that these are self-created hardships. When this application was initially filed in early of 2020, the application proposed a building height of 29 feet to the top of the roof. That was subsequently revised upon the submission of the applicant's final environmental impact statement. They did in that final EIS provide industry articles which spoke to the general trends and the needs for increased clear height for general industrial buildings. So that kind of touches on the height, and then regarding the impervious surface coverage, it has been stated throughout the application that the request for increase in impervious coverage is to facilitate truck turning movements throughout the site. Now, while I will, I will definitely agree that the site needs to safely operate, they need those truck movements, there's also the argument that could be stated that if they weren't proposing 412,000 square feet of building, they wouldn't need that additional truck turning surface. So really, in summary, it's just, the, the planning board has significant concerns about the continued potential to set precedent for the increased in variance, you know, for the increased building height, as we are seeing through several applications now that have been before the planning board and ZBA. And given, just given the consistent nature of these applications, you know, this is something that is going to be looked at comprehensively through the comprehensive plan update that is currently being undertaken by the town, and we will solicit the ZBA's input on that. That about does it.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Burns, thank you. Anybody else? Counsel, you have anything?
So, yeah, thanks Greg for the summary of our application. We just do note, on December 8th, from the last hearing, the applicant went through the five area variance factors and provided expert testimony to substantiate the reasons for the requested relief. So with that, I would like to have our, our project engineer, Jaclyn Pronto, just briefly describe this project as well as, and just briefly again summarize the need for the impervious coverage and height variance.
Okay, one, one question. So as of now, you still have no tenants?
Correct, there's no tenants. Thank you.
No shaker.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Which way you went last time?
You did, but you do it again.
Just state your name and your address.
Jaclyn Pronto, Key Civil Engineering, 664 Blue Point Road, Holtsville, New York. So I made these same statements last month of the presentation, but in light of Greg's testimony, I just want to reiterate. So in regard to the percentage of impervious surfaces, that is a small variance that we're seeking. We're only over by 5.5%, which is a 9.18% variance above the requirement, so I do feel that that's de minimis in what we're looking for. I did go back to look to see if there's ways to tighten up our radii and create some larger landscaped areas, and I don't see that as feasible. There might be areas within our parking lot where pervious surfaces can be laid, but I think that the practicality of that surface in this type of a use, it's not practical. So for those reasons, we maintained our application as is. In regard to the building height, I do want to just stress that our building is setback more than four times what the code requires. So I'm not familiar with the other application where that 35-foot variance was granted, so I do understand that was only five feet above code, and where eight feet above code, that eight foot is just at the peak. I'm gonna, when I'm done, the architect will get up and give you a little bit more information about the building and the structure and the reasons for it. However, I do want to note that it's just the peak that's 38, and the average height would be less, and due to the setback, it's not going to have an impact to those passing by on the road, where setback from the road, 124 feet, where 30 feet is required by code. In addition, we have very large landscaping in the front. We have, we have a 55 to 130-foot wide landscape strip with a three-foot tall berm and a significant amount of plant material on there. So that is also going to buffer the view that potentially would be seen for that increase in building height. Similarly, to the rear of the property, 50 foot is required by code for a setback, and we're 195, so almost, almost four times the setback that's required by code. And in the same regard, we are, the buildings are set far from the rear property line, and there is substantial landscaping, of which evergreen trees to grow to a mature height of 40 to 60 feet will be planted. So to the effect of, will these variances, you know, have an impact on the environment? We don't feel that they will at all, based on the size of the property and the location of the buildings within the property, and the setbacks to front and rear lot lines.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions? The zoning board?
Uh, yeah, they were, you know...
I'd be happy to provide.
Yeah, they were also...
I just want to make sure that I could represent in the additional application. So you guys, you have...
We have all, I think we have.
We have all, yeah.
We have.
Turn it over to...
Were you sworn in last time?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Michael Messina, BLD Architects, 31 West Main Street, Suite 205, Patchogue, New York. So as the architect, working with the owner, the desire is to have the high rack storage in these facilities, we're working on probably about 13 or 14 other projects, you know, between Nassau and Suffolk County. The trend is for these, these projects to have this type of rack storage. The racks come in certain heights and increments, and in order to get that height that they're desiring, the 34 feet at the eve and the 38 foot at the ridge would work for this type of project, and to get them the desired results that they want for this type of racking storage. Moving it down, they lose like a whole full rack of storage because it comes in certain height increments, so just moving it down a little bit, then they lose one full storage rack. That's really the reason that set the precedent for the, the height of the building. And as Jac, what Jackie said was, it's a pitch roof building, so that the eaves are at the 34 feet, and the, the height of 38 feet is only at the ridge, which is down the center. So... Questions?
Okay. So you're, you're designing these buildings for a future use that you don't have a tenant for?
Correct. They don't, they say they don't have tenants now. The trend then is to be, for the high rack storage, what we're seeing across the island is, and that's the kind of desired result of what, what the developers want.
And we're looking for trades to occupy the spaces?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's probably a number of different trades that would do it. In terms of the rack storage, it's something that, you know, is what's happening across the island right now.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mike?
Yes.
What would happen to the project if you had to come down to 35.5 feet in height?
Again, coming down to the 35.5 feet, they would most likely, due to the structure of the building, lose that one, one bay of racking, is my understanding.
Who's up next? Anyone?
So, just so with that, we, do you have any other questions? That is our presentation, and we ask that our testimony from December 8th be incorporated into this evening's record.
Absolutely.
So another of the two items that are in question, there's no movement, as far as you can adjust to any of that?
I could, we could review it, see if there's anything...
In other words, come closer to the code?
We, we could review it, and if it's possible, we will certainly make the, the, the project more code compliant.
No, it's tough for us because we can't be setting a precedent every time we hear one of these cases, and it seems like they're going to be popular, so we're going to be seeing a lot of them.
Understood.
And we gotta stand somewhere.
Correct, yeah, I understand.
I mean, it's a big project, I realize that, but what can you do to come closer to the code? I'd like to know.
Okay.
Has anybody analyzed the income stream on the property?
Um, yes, it was a...
So you did an income stream, and at 60%, you have a certain income stream, and of course, at 65%, you have another income stream. And then, of course, you're going to be dealing with vacancy rates and all the other things that are applicable to an income.
Yes.
So I'm trying to wonder, is it a deal breaker to make it 60%, so we don't have to seek that variance or grant that variance?
Oh, in terms of the, you have the impervious coverage?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, this is more of a design question in terms of, because we, yeah...
Well, it's a revenue producing question.
I thought you were speaking about the low interest rates.
In terms of getting the impervious coverage down to 60%.
If you go from 65, what you're requesting, down to what the code is, 60%, how much does it change your revenue stream to the property on an income approach?
To the microphone, please.
Has anybody analyzed that?
The microphone, Mike.
Come on up.
As, as the site engineer, I did not study the income, but I think...
But people advising the families.
No, I understand. Scott.
We'll be owners. Yeah, sorry, I'm beginning to get the question. I'm gonna have the applicant, who's here, Scott Johns, who can discuss this issue.
Okay, I'd love to hear what he has to say. Come on up.
Were you sworn in last time?
I was.
You what? Just state your name and your address.
Scott Johns, 147 Steamboat Road, Great Neck, New York.
What was the name again? Pull the microphone up.
Yeah, pull that mic up.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott Johns, J-O-H-N-S, 147 Steamboat Road, Great Neck, New York, 11024.
Okay. And you're, you're one of the owners of the property?
No, I'm the manager of the company.
You're the manager of the company to build that facility?
For the developer.
And you're doing it on behalf of the owners of the property?
Correct.
And I would assume that your contract or the contract is subject to them getting a certain percentage lot coverage?
It's predicated on the property's value per acre.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's just a function of what the land costs and, you know, what we need to achieve, achieve in order to make that feasible.
Okay, so, so have people analyzed the revenue stream?
Absolutely.
And you determine the value based on the income approach?
Yes.
You would come up with a certain dollar amount?
Yes.
Which I know you probably don't want to disclose, but I would like to hear what you have to say.
Initially, the project was, was analyzed, and the result was that there was a necessity for roughly 120,000 square, 125,000 square feet in order to justify the, the value of the property.
The purchase?
Yes.
Okay.
It's since come down from there, which is how we ended up with the 412, because originally we were at, I believe, 72% impervious surface?
Lot coverage?
Yes.
Impervious.
Impervious surface. So we brought that down 77% after comments from the planning board, which brought us to the 412% right now, which is just at the threshold of, of where we need to be as far as the square footage in order to justify the 30-acre lot.
Okay, so, so if you went to 60%, you would be undervaluing their contract of sale?
Correct.
That's what you relied on?
Correct.
And is there any hard analysis of that, or it's just discussion?
No, we've had market studies done, so we've, we've looked at the, the current market rates, we've looked at the, the occupancy, the potential tenant...
We've looked at the, the occupancy, the potential tenants. You know, and using those figures, you know, that's what the calculations are based on.
Yeah.
Just, so, so the contract sales based upon getting the variances that you're watching here from the store?
Correct. There was another question asked to the tenancy. I believe that was asked several times. Given the, the length of time that this process has taken, which we're at three years now, we've had Oh, I'm sorry. So given the length of time this process has taken at this point, given that we're at three years now, we've had to avoid or preclude, you know, finding permanent tenants, given the usage of the space. The intended use is for small and medium businesses that'd be taking spaces between 5,000 and 20,000 square feet. We're not looking at, you know, bringing in a giant corporation that's looking for 50, 100 or 200,000 square feet that is willing to wait two, three, five years for that space.
Right.
You know, our, our tenants will be your, your plumbers, your electricians, you know, your HVAC companies, your pool companies, things of that nature. And, you know, they don't have the wherewithal to wait, you know, an extended period of time for space on the promise that it'll happen. So that's why there's no, you know, current set tenancy. There's over 60 spaces in the development as it's planned right now. We've been contacted by over 100 different organizations or companies in the area that are looking for space. But like I said, we can't, you know, make a firm commitment to anyone at this point.
Well, I know the needs there.
Absolutely.
But me personally, I would like to see it reduced. I can't speak for the other board members, but I believe some of them feel that way. And it may enhance your chances. But we'll have, we'll adjourn the meeting and we'll talk about it in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I would just ask the board to keep in mind the profile of the property, given it's, we're, we're looking to build back, not out. So the impact to the neighborhood will be minimal to the, the actual, you know, frontage of the property. Whereas if you were to take a similar property and, you know, turn it 90 degrees, you'd be looking at something that would have a tremendous impact on the area. It would be something that'd be, you know, it would certainly change the, the, the face of the landscape there. Whereas this is a unique situation where you have a narrow, long property that allows for the additional square footage without putting it in the, the face of the public.
Yes, I, I understand that and the property slopes down as well.
Correct.
So I don't know what kind of effect it'll have on the height as you drive by and you're looking at these heights.
I mean, you, the only buildings you'll see are the, the front two buildings.
Front two buildings, right, right. Make them third. I'm just kidding.
If, if the, 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 the board is suggesting something like that, we would be happy to take it under consideration and
Well, it's a visual impact, that's what it is. I mean, I think, I think our residents are more concerned that anything else is traffic. They're worried about the traffic that's going to generate. It's a problem. So they would like to use, you know, they would want us to, as a zoning board, to deny you in any way they can or we can to stop the project. But it's not going to stop the project. Because there's certain laws that have to be applied, what the zoning is. But if you could scale it down,
Yes, and
that's something we would, I would consider, I don't know how the other board does.
If it would make a difference in the, the process, then we will certainly look at, you know, the possibility of reducing the height of the front two buildings. And then the relative height of the buildings behind it would be, you know, at a, if we can step the property in such a way that it allows for the, the relative height and the sightlines from the street to be, you know, more minimal to the impact, then that's something we'll look at.
Okay, well, I, I would suggest maybe you contact our attorney to discuss those issues if you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like we have some people on Zoom. I don't know if anybody wants to
Sure, open them up.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Are you looking to make a comment on this public hearing?
Uh, yes. For appeal 2022-040, and it's Paul Hoffman.
We're in a different hearing right now, sir.
Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to comment on this public hearing?
Say what the hearing is.
One more time, anybody want to be heard on this hearing?
Yes.
Oh, here we go.
HK Ventures.
Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Talkley Turchin, resident of Calverton, president of the Greater Calverton Civic Association. Good evening. I've not attended one of your zoning board meetings before, so forgive me if I'm not sure how to run, conduct myself through this public meeting, public hearing. But very briefly, the, the concerns of the residents certainly are traffic. But it also is a concern that the materials and lot coverage that are used in the, in the building of this project need to be taken into consideration, the DEC law for New York State that instead of building materials that will be more green, let's say. And we need to be looking at the energy consumption and that, and that type of factor. I'm not hearing anything spoken about that yet. I'm not sure if in your zoning board hearing, it's appropriate. Could you let me know?
Yeah, there's only two factors.
Yeah, so, hi Talkley, how are you?
Hi, thank you.
The zoning board is dealing with an area variance right now, so it's just
Right.
dimensional, so those matters that you are referring to would really be handled by the planning board.
Okay, thanks for that. Just wanted to make sure it was spoken up about because I, I do see that this, this project has not addressed that at the planning board, to my understanding. And just so that this board is recognizing that as you consider new needs for warehouse space in the town of Riverhead, that there are going to be constraints besides the zoning that are needing to be paid attention to. And this, to my knowledge, this project has not addressed those needs. I appreciate your letting me have a, a moment here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else to be heard on this matter that's on Zoom? Okay.
Scott, how am I, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So when you came three years ago, whenever you got involved with this project, did you guys look at a model that might fit zoning as far as whether it would return the investment?
We tried to have the project meet the zoning requirements as much as possible and still achieve what we needed to see in order to have this project move ahead.
You're a low talker, you gotta talk a little, talk a little louder.
We're not, we're not here though to have you success at achieving what you want on this property. We're trying to enforce our codes and like I say, can't be a precedent every two weeks, so.
No, I, I
Did you try to fit into the zoning to begin with?
I, I, I understand. Fitting into the, the current zoning and achieving what is industry standard in industrial warehouse space today is impossible. A 30-foot clear span is, is considered the industrial, the, the minimum requirement for, for modern warehouse space. And when I say minimum, there, there are studies that are done that show, you know, depending on the size of the warehouse determines the amount of height required on the inside in order to achieve, you know, maximum utility. And for our spaces, which are considerably smaller than a lot of the other warehouse spaces that are being built or have been built on Long Island, the 30 feet was the minimum. In order to achieve 30 feet, even if we were to use a flat top roof, it would have to be a minimum of 34 feet on the outside. So fitting that inside the 30-foot envelope would, would be impossible.
Well, you got 35.5 as a precedent with the board right now, so.
So originally, we tried, the roof trusses that would be required to build the building had all been purchased by Amazon for the next five years, was what our, you know, research showed. So there was, there was, we were not able to acquire the material that would have been necessary to build a flat top structure. So in order to get around that, we looked at prefab steel, which requires the, the, the peak. And in order to get the 30-foot clear on the eaves or the outsides of the, the space, the height of 38 feet at the center was what was required.
Just, excuse me, just one quick question, and it may have been stated on the record, I just don't recall it. Do you as the developer, or does the developer at this point in time actually own the property clear out and free? Or is it in the midst of a transaction that's contingent upon?
No, it's, it's in a contingent transaction currently.
Okay, thank you.
So just to make the, for the record, the lot coverage on the site is code compliant. I know there was some, they were saying, in some courts, they were saying building coverage and other times we were saying impervious surface area. The building coverage is code compliant, we're 40% is permitted and we're at 31.31%. And throughout this application, the pro, the applicant has made changes to the, to the overall project to make it more code compliant. Just as an example, the impervious coverage started above 70% and through modifications, now it's down to a, the requested 65.51%. But the, the applicant, as, as we stated, will look at the project, design and see if it's feasible to make any potential changes. So with that, that's, that's our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move that appeal number 2022-039. I move that the appeal of HK Ventures LLC, 4285 Middle Country Road, Calverton, SCTM number 600-116-122. INDC zoning for variances and/or relief from the town code, Chapter 301, Section 123A. The proposed pervious surface coverage is 65.51%. Total lot area maximum under 60% and with proposed building height is 38 feet, center line of roof peak and the maximum permitted is 30 feet, be adjourned without date.
Wait a second.
Want to move to April 13th?
Okay, April 13th.
April 13th, alright.
Let's make it April 13th. We'll see what happens. They can always ask, they can always ask for a German.
Yes, can respectfully, can we make the, the next date earlier than April?
That's the next meeting.
That's, oh, the next meeting is in April. Okay.
No.
No, there's another one?
We have some meetings in February, don't we? January.
I'm only kidding.
Lira, you've been down Florida too long.
A senile citizen now. April 13th.
Give us a date.
Is there any available dates in March?
No, first date, what's the first meeting in March?
March 9th.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
March 9th.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski?
Aye.
I vote aye, so we see you folks in March.
Thank you.
Okay, off you go.
Appeal 2022-040, Dariush Ilahi, 180 Creek Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-29-1-33, RB 80 zoning for variances and/or relief from Chapter 301, Section 291B, where proposed side yard accessory setback is four feet when 25 feet is required, adjourned from December 8th, 2022.
Doc, you've already been sworn in, pull that microphone down to you, you've already been sworn in. Just state your name and your address.
Dariush Ilahi, 180 Creek Road, Wading River, New York, 11792.
You have anything to add or anything, Doc?
Well, the last time we were here in December 8th, the board recommended that I speak with my neighbor and try to come to a resolution. We spoke. He said, I think I quote, he said, "I understand what you need. It's a difficult decision. The board has to decide because I still would like the shed to be in the driveway or in the front house."
Well, we have a decision, so. Do we have anybody else to be heard on this matter?
Yes, sir, we're on Zoom here.
Okay, have you been sworn in?
I was in the last December 8th meeting.
Just state your name and your address.
176 Creek Road, Wading River.
And what's your name?
Paul Hoffman.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
So I, I had sent a letter on this just in case
And we have received your letter.
technology wasn't, wasn't up to speed here. So that, that's somewhat accurate. Yeah, we, we did have a cordial discussion on this. We came to an understanding we couldn't have an understanding. I, I'd say the only safe and logical place for a shed would be in the driveway. And I stated that in the letter and we had sent it to the, to the chairman, I'm sorry, there. And I don't know if you had gotten that. If not, I could read it, it's brief.
No, I have it, we have it, we have it.
Okay, so you did get it?
It's in the record.
And I, I think it basically states clearly what the situation is. It's a, it's a safety hazard, so I, I don't know if I can state that with you, with the letter, sir.
Okay, we understand. Anyone else to be heard? I think your wife wanted to speak too?
Well, my wife is here, I think we're under the same understanding. Would you like to hear from her?
No, it's not necessary. She signed off on the letter also, too. We got it.
So, yes, sir, so it's, we, we had drafted that letter together.
Okay.
So.
All right. Anyone else to be heard? Let's have a reading.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I read, we moved that the appeal number 2022-040. I move the appeal of Dariush Ilahi, 180 Creek Road, Wading River, SCTM number 600-29-1-33, RB-80 zoning for variances and/or relief from Town Code, Chapter 301, Section 291 Subdivision B, where proposed side yard accessory setback is four feet when 25 feet is required be denied.
Can we hear a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, sorry, Doc, your appeal's been denied.
Okay, Appeal 2022-045, Joanna and Peter Theofanis, 23 Pyle Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-70-1-31.1, RB 40 zoning for variances and/or relief from Town Code, Chapter 301-15A-1A, where accessory structures may not be constructed in a front yard.
And you are?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Larry Davis, 175
Are you an attorney?
I am.
You got the, state your name and address.
Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Patchogue, New York, for the applicant. We're here as the call of the calendar had indicated for a swimming pool in a front yard where accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard. This is a 19,908-square-foot property located in the RB 40 zoning area. The pool that we're looking to have approved is 65-foot from a existing right-of-way that accesses the property. The pool is, really cannot be put in the rear yard. The rear yard is right on the Great South, uh, Great Beconic Bay. The seawall is only 38 feet from the existing deck, the, the most southerly structure on the property. There is already an accessory structure in the front yard. There's a framed garage that's almost exactly on the property line. So this would not be unusual to the neighborhood or to the property itself. There's, again, it's not self-created. My clients have no other means or area to put this pool and we're looking for approval on it today. I was here previously on a similar application back in June. June 23rd was the date of that application. The name was Vincent and Jody Ordiani, where this board granted very similar relief of a front yard accessory structure, a pool on a, on a floodlot that we had presented back then. So we're asking that the board approve this application as well. If you have any questions, I'd be more than certainly happy to I'd be more than certainly happy to answer if they have any questions.
I don't have any questions. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? It's on, uh, what is it?
Pye Lane, P Y E Lane.
Okay. Nobody has any questions?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal number two zero two-two dash oh four-five, I move that appeal with Joanna and Peter Theofanis, two-three Pye Lane, Jamesport, S C T M number six hundred dash seventy dash one dash three-one point one, R B forty zoning for variances and or relief from town code, chapter three oh one dash fifteen A subdivision one, subdivision A, accessory structures may not be constructed in front yard, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto if any is filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I will vote aye if they fix the four thousand poples on Pye Lane, it's just, anyway, I vote aye.
They'll use their luck from the pool.
Yeah, right, holy Christmas. All right.
Well, thank you, I'll have a very.
Take care of yourself.
Take good care.
Appeal twenty twenty-two dash zero four-six, Big D Incorporated, eight sixteen West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash one-twenty-four dash three dash thirteen, P R C zoning for variances and or relief from town code chapter three oh one dash two-twenty-two B, where conversion of fourth, first floor of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling to storage for an existing onsite deli and maintaining residential use on the second floor is not a permitted use within the P R C zoning use district. Pursuant to town code, the zoning board of appeals may approve a special exception to allow the change from one non-conforming use to another. In chapter three oh one dash one-sixty-two A, where existing side yard setback for storage structure is two feet, minimum required is fifteen feet, and where existing rear yard setback for storage structure is twenty point three feet, minimum required is fifty feet.
Good evening, Mr. Cuddy.
Good evening. I appear for the applicants, um, and would like to make a little note for your housekeeping. This site is known as eight sixteen in your, uh, notice, but it's actually eight twelve. And the engineering department has approved that, and I have proof of that with me, but I can deliver up a copy of it to the.
Well, the application is eight, eight twelve.
Yeah, the application does, but your notice is eight sixteen.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll go after our secretaries for that, they'll be docked.
I just want to make sure we have the, the same place. This is an unusual situation, and it's a twofold application. This is in the P R C, the Beconic River Card District. The site is sixteen thousand nine hundred square feet, the overall requirement in that district is eighty thousand square feet, so we have about a fifth of the area that we should have. The twofold application is, is just as mentioned, is both, uh, a non-conforming use and a area variance. This site is known as the Maple Tree Barbecue. It's unique in that on one building site or one tax lot site, there's both a residence and a building, a resident, a restaurant, um, that probably in this town doesn't make it unique. But what's really important here is that the Maple Tree Restaurant has a significant catering business, and they need much more storage space than they have, and they need to use the residence, the first floor of the residence, to store their equipment and supplies, they just don't have enough area to do it right now. So what they're looking for is to retain the residence upstairs, that is, the apartment upstairs, and storage downstairs. That really impacts no neighbor, doesn't do anything, in fact, it makes it less of a burden, I think, on the neighborhood to have storage downstairs and just an apartment upstairs. And in both cases, we have a non-conforming use. This site has been in existence, as the C O's attached indicate, for more than fifty years, it's, it was there in nineteen sixty-five. It hasn't changed since that time, the residence was there, the restaurant has been there for many, many years. So what we're asking at this point is to change the non-conforming residence to a residence upstairs and the storage area downstairs, and as I say, that does really not impact anybody, but it makes the restaurant very viable. So we hope that the board could see that and permit us to do that. As far as the area variance goes, there is a tarpaulin type cover on a steel-framed, um, site, it's an outside storage area. This area is unfortunately close to the neighbor, it's two feet at one point, the backyard is virtually the same yard as the garage, the entire site has a fence six feet high surrounding it. So the impact, again, uh, is small, and not only that, but the site has been this way for more than ten years. The, the, the outdoor storage that's there has been there, uh, as I say, for many, many years, it's withstood storms, it's strong, I was told that we are supposed to address something called the residential, um, I guess it's called the, the International Residential Code. I'm not sure what that is, and the engineers and architects I've spoken to say that that's not applicable to this particular unit. This is manufactured by a company called Shelter Logic in Connecticut, they have similar type of, of, um, units that they have indicated have an eighty mile wind speed rating, and they snow ground a low covering of forty-three, uh, pounds per square foot. And I understand from the engineers that I've talked to that that's very sufficient, and obviously it must be sufficient because it's been there for more than ten years. So I would hope that this site, um, which, again, I think has minimum impact on, on the neighborhood, doesn't cause any environmental harm, um, has very little alternative to store because it's outside storage, by the way, outside storage is one of the permitted accessory uses at this site. And while it's substantial, um, that's only because the lot is small. So, again, we would ask that the board permit us to have a variance for this, um, and we, we thought there was, by the way, a variance for this site, and when we looked at the many, and there are half a dozen C O's, uh, we mistook the reference in the C O, uh, as approving this particular unit. So this is something we overlooked when the people bought it, people being, uh, the barbecue operators, they bought it six years ago, um, we all, we thought at that point that this was approved, and we're now asking for that approval.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions? Are you ready?
I don't.
No, I, I really don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't either.
Just one question.
Sure.
Just, what's the intended storage, what's going to be inside there, I'm just thinking, there's a residence on top of it, is it just going to be, also say, paper and things along those lines, is it combustible?
They have, they have equipment inside, they have, I think, some kitchen equipment, and the reason for that is that ultimately, the owner would like to make this a country inn, and so the owner happens to be a cooking teacher, and will use part of that area, uh, that, that has, uh, various appliances in it for that purpose, but they're just being stored there.
Okay. Well, they can hire Zeweski to, uh, show you how to make, uh, horseradish or, uh, Easter buns. All right, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Okay, let's have a motion, let's have a move.
You want a reading, right?
Let's have a reading. One of those things.
Appeal number twenty twenty-two dash zero four-six, I move that the appeal of Big D eight, eighty-eight-one-two, West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred, one-two-four dash three dash thirteen, P R C zoning for variance and relief from town code, chapter three oh one, twenty-two-two B, where conversion of first floor of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling to storage for existing onsite deli and maintaining residential use on the second floor is not a permitted use within the P R C zoning use district. Presumed to town code, the town board, zoning board of appeals may approve a special exemption to the, allow the change from one non-conforming use to another, and chapter three oh one dash one-six-two A, where existing side yard setback for storage structure is two feet, minimum required is fifteen feet, and where existing rear yard setback for store structure is twenty point three feet, minimum required is fifty, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto if any is filed with the building inspector.
Second.
All right. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I certainly vote aye.
Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Cuddy. Always good seeing you.
Take care of yourself.
Happy New Year.
A stay try.
Okay, off we go.
Okay, appeal twenty twenty-two dash zero four-seven, Shari Pye, one-eleven Second Street, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash ninety-two dash six dash one, R B forty zoning for variances and or relief from town code, chapter three oh one dash fifteen A, one B, where proposed forty-three point three foot side accessory setback, minimum allowed fifty feet, chapter three oh one dash fifteen A, one C, where proposed five feet rear accessory setback, minimum allowed is twenty feet, and chapter three oh one dash fourteen, where habitable space in an accessory structure not incidental to or customarily found in a single-family dwelling.
Applicant here, anybody here, partners?
Um, they were supposed to come via Zoom.
What was that?
They were, they were going to join via Zoom, but I don't.
Zoom, are they on Zoom? Okay, let's go to the next one. Let's all off, and we'll call them up again.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
On, on this particular appeal, I, I want to move that we, um, adjourn it for two weeks, and then we'll give a, um, a, um, we will render a decision via, um.
Two oh seven, seven?
What's, what's the word, door? The agenda. If we, if we adjourn this for two weeks, I can't think straight right now, I'm sorry.
President?
It's just, it's that, it's that same issue that we.
It's the same issue that we pulled the other one.
Okay.
And reopened it.
All right.
So I'd want to see if we can adjourn this for two weeks.
Sounds good to me.
Nobody's here.
Nobody's here, sir.
Adjourn it as opposed to leaving it open, I guess.
What's the date we got?
Uh, the next date is the twenty-sixth of January.
Okay.
Okay, January twenty-sixth.
Second.
We have a motion.
Shall move.
Second.
Okay.
Vote.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay.
Appeal twenty twenty-two dash zero four-eight, Forty-eight Cromer LLC, nineteen Cromer Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash seventy dash one dash thirty-one point one, R F C zoning for variances and or relief from town code, chapter three oh one dash one-sixty-five, where proposed front setback is seventy-eight feet, minimum required is one hundred feet, chapter three oh one dash one-sixty-five, where proposed side yard setback is twelve point nine feet, minimum required is thirty feet, and chapter three oh one dash one-sixty-five, where proposed combined side setback is forty-seven point seven feet, minimum required is sixty feet.
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so we got it.
Thank you.
State your name and your address.
Ray Dickoff from Aquabug, I'm here representing Forty-eight Cromer LLC. We're proposing to build a house on nineteen Cromer Avenue, uh, nineteen Cromer Avenue, uh, came to be by merging sixteen fifty-two West Main Street and nineteen Cromer. Uh, nineteen Cromer started out as a three thousand square foot lot, uh, sixteen fifty-two West Main Street was a twenty-one thousand plus square foot lot. So with this merger, uh, you know, it gave us the, the land, we went through planning, we got the site plan approved, um, but when you look at the property, you provided the surveys, we have them in front of you, or do I have some more copies if you know? We have that. Due to the shape of the property and the fact that we had to leave.
Huh? Big pot?
From the wrong place.
What are you looking for?
Yeah, I need something to eat. And, like, please, I need a big meal. I, I don't know what, I'm not, 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 I'm not.
What do you, what do you, what do you need, sir?
Just, just what I need to eat, mom, just what I need to eat, I say nothing, I'm hungry.
We don't have any food.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got.
This is not a restaurant. This is a town meeting.
I don't know, I don't know, it's very bad, it's very bad, I'm on my way, on my way, on my way.
Okay.
Yeah, you help, this, this.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't help you.
Thank you, thank you.
We, we, we can't help you, sorry.
I love you, this, um, this, um, I don't know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta get, um, get, get the rest, I go, all right, the, the, the strip, you know, over, over, and, you know.
She's gonna give so much.
Lord, stay there.
Thank you.
She's got a poor thesis.
Hold on, mom, thank you, mom.
He's gone. He ain't gonna hurt nobody.
Hey, how very big praise is that, sir? Go ahead, Rick.
Again, uh, due to the shape of the property and the fact that we had to put fifty percent natural buffer to the New York State D E C, the entire back, uh, which would be a west side, is a natural buffer, fifty percent of the property, I then moved the house further down towards Cromer, which is why we're not a hundred foot over setback, we're seventy-eight foot. I'm asking for the side yard setback because I maintained the thirty-foot setback which is required to the, uh, north, because that gives me the maximum distance from the railroad tracks. And then the combined yard is, I'm asking for that variance just because of the math, so that's why it was, uh, so, basically, I maintained the thirty foot from the railroad tracks, uh, which is leaving me with twelve foot. Oh, twelve foot nine instead of thirty feet, and that's on the southerly side, which is West Main Street, which, if you look at the towboat, is probably about a fifteen-foot grade change there, uh, that I'm below West Main Street. This property is located between the railroad trestle, uh, the hu, you know, West Main Street Bridge that goes over the tracks, and the junkyard that's on Cromer Avenue.
Sounds like a very desirable area to live in.
Well, again, to.
Really, are you gonna have somebody really living here, right?
To what you've been questioning tonight, to what you're questioning tonight, there, there is no, there's no neighbors currently, and it never will be.
Seriously? Who, who plans on living there?
You guys aren't gonna live there, are they?
Me personally?
Yeah. So it's gonna be an investment property.
What's the intention of building a residential property in the middle of an industrial zone?
It's either that or a country inn, that's, it's, this is.
So you're trying to utilize the property so it maximizes?
But there's nothing else that could be done with that other than residential.
Okay, and, so I would assume you're gonna build it and then rent it?
Yeah.
So that, so that the landowner can get a return on it?
It's, nothing else can be done with that other than a residential house.
Sounds pretty good to me.
How long has the owner owned this property?
I believe the first piece was purchased about three years ago, three plus years ago, from, uh, Larry Sims, we bought the one piece from, and, uh, the front piece on Cromer was from, uh, Mr. Eisler.
How much is totally invested, do you know?
God, I don't know if the time I heard it, you know, a hundred.
Guess Frank doesn't play sports anymore in town.
That's why he's, that's why he shows a lot.
I know why he owned it.
You know why he owned it, yeah.
He's a character. Okay. Yeah.
I guess I have the same questions that, or comments that you already made, I don't know, that driveway coming out to Cromer Avenue, my God, that corner's probably one of the busiest corners for traffic in town.
The, the weight change from west to, to West Main is sixteen feet.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting go somewhere else.
The D E C is the property to the rear. DEC is the property to the rear.
But he's 30 feet in the rear, huh?
Yeah.
So, it's really 60 feet to the house.
This is 25 before you cross over the tracks on your left.
Yes, at the part that the gas company's here.
Right. Which Mr. Fisher has an interest in that owner here. Well, the MTA, I, I don't know if they have a say in that or not. Does the MTA have a say in this? They don't get involved as, as long as you're 30 feet away? Is that the key?
Yes, we went through, when we went through planning, they had me put a fence up as part of the planning.
And the house is another 30 feet beyond that.
Beyond that, yeah.
Interesting. Well, you only have two uses for the property.
Correct.
So, okay, I, I get it.
Aish.
Aish.
I don't know what to say. Dan, Otto, you have any questions?
Well, I have a problem with the safety of whoever's going to live there getting out on Cromer Avenue. I know that shouldn't be our concern, but I don't want to prove something and have six accidents there or whatever, and everybody's saying, why didn't somebody do something?
The planning board did approve this site. It's fully approved by this planning board as far as the driveway, getting the access onto Cromer.
Did they, when you said they approved the site plan, did you have to apply for a site plan application because...
We did, yes. When we merged the lots, we put a site plan application in. We went through the site.
I mean, a site plan application because it's required?
I believe it's required because of the lot merger. It was required.
Well, you merged, you merged the lots. You don't, you don't need any permission to merge lots.
We merged the lots, and we did a site...
Do it by D, by operation of...
We did a site plan, and it went through the site plan, and a part of their condition of the site plan approval.
Procedure of commercial site plan. Did they put you through a commercial site plan?
No.
Okay, so you just did a merge, and you went to them and said, what do you think?
Yeah, and they approved that map with, with the fence and the, and that was it.
I get it. Okay, thank you. All right.
Ron, do you have anything to add?
Dan, we're going to take a vote, so whatever you guys want to do. Okay, let's have a, let's have a reading.
Who has the reading?
What's that? You want to think about it? Okay, let's go into German.
I'm sorry, I don't want to refuse it, but, you know...
Okay. If you want some more time, that's fine.
I would like to have one more meeting.
All right, let's meet, let's move this to the next meeting here.
Is there information you'd like me to bring back? Do you have questions that I can bring you back more information or just want to think about?
Actually, just following the concept, that's it. It's just not a practical thing to put this on, but you're just asking for an area variance.
Yes.
That's it.
That's all we're asking.
It's a, it's, it's a permitted use in that zone. So, all our job is, is to say what the setbacks are in the area variance. That's it.
Right. Yep.
It's not to allow the use. It's to...
And there's no other way I can...
It's just...
There's no other way to place this house without asking for that setback.
So, we're looking at just setbacks and whatever that, what you're asking for, you for. But I, I can understand it's a little time to absorb it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so let's have a, a reading to move this to the next meeting.
Who has the resolution, Mr. Chairman?
I've been looking.
Mr. Whitmire?
Possibly.
Could be.
Give me a call over.
No, I can do it off of here.
Go ahead, do it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2022-048, 48 Cromer LLC, 19 Cromer Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-70-1-31.1 RFC zoning for variances and or relief from town code chapter 301-165, where proposed setback is 78 foot, minimum required is 100 foot. Chapter 301-165, where proposed side setback is 12.9 foot, minimum required is 30 foot. And chapter 301-165, where proposed combined side setback is 47.7 foot, and minimum required is 60 foot, that we... Adjourn? Not adjourn. Adjourn till the...
Adjourn to the next meeting, which would be the 26th.
26th.
January 26th.
Second. Okay, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so she folks at this meeting.
It's an aye, yai, yai, yai.
Thank you.
Now, we're here, motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Who's got him? You got him? You got him? Okay. Shall move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Shall move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
All right.
Thank you, ladies.